All right, seven o'clock. So we'll call the meeting to order. Planning and zoning commission, regular reading Tuesday, August 13th. Roll call on the left.
June, yeah.
Daniel, that's it.
No, I'm on there.
Harley, the startings.
Mike Ray.
And Sherri.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you. We do have a forum, and I will be appointing Dan Kaskovich for Frank Mills to speak here. Starting with public hearing A, 24-1 SA of Albert and Susan Monte applying for a two lot re-subdivision of 257 Musa Pond Road, assessors map 22, block 88, block 20, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
Yes, good evening for the record. My name is Craig Lawd, I'm a licensed land surveyor. We're killing the engineering associates to place the business at 114 Westcott Road in Danielson. I'm representing Albert and Susan Monte on the two lot for the re-subdivision that they had before. I see you already have plans, so I won't distribute any. I've got the board up here, I'll try to make it so public can see as well. So it's an existing lot of record, it was created by subdivision back in 1985. It's located on Musa Pond Road, 257 Musa Pond Road. It's about halfway between I-395 and, what was the other road over there? Green Hollow Road is where it's located. So there's an existing home on it. The proposal is to split it along the lines here, creating two lots. The existing house is on lot 20.1, which will have an area of 5.1 acres. The new developed lot is going to be to the west of that, and that's noted as lot 20.2. That will have 1.4 acres. Again, this is a subdivision that they are doing to create to give the parcel to one of their family members, their daughter. So that's the reason for creating it. We did do soil testing, we are showing a house on the proposed lot, septic system, we have a proposed well up front, we do have a proposed driveway going out on the lower portion of the lot. I'm going to say that this lot is all field down there, or it's lawn area. The only area of clearing that we have to do is actually to make the driveway go through the wooded area out to the road. I did publish the sightlines that we have, so looking east, we have 300 feet with this driveway, and looking west, we'll have 250 feet, so that does meet the town's driveway ordinance. There'll be a little bit of grading to put the house on here. We did submit the plans to NDDH, and I did submit that, I will give you a copy here now on the date of July 1st, 2024, and that is an approval of the division of the lot. So I'll give that for the record that we have on it. We do have two waivers that we're requesting as part of this. One of the waivers is to section 610, request waiver for the property history map. And basically, since the subdivision was done in 1985, the Monties were the first ones to buy this parcel shortly thereafter and have owned it since, so there's really no reason to go through the exercise of drawing that up, so we are asking the commission to consider granting a waiver. I do have a written request on that, which was also posted.
Thank you.
And then the second waiver request, which is not really a waiver, but a consideration for the commission, and that is regarding to open space fee or dedicating any open space. So I do have a letter dated July 27th, 2024, and as pursuant to Connecticut general statute section 825, we're asking the commission to waive the open space fee or open space requirement. Section 825 states that open space requirements shall not apply in the transfer of land as to a parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, child, uncle, or first cousin, for no consideration. And that is the intent of the owner, that they would deed this lot over for their daughter to have a home. So we're asking you to consider that on this application. So I'll give you that one as well. You have both these waivers in your pack.
Okay.
I think that really draws down what we're doing. We do have wetlands approval, there were some wetlands in the back portion with one little pocket, but none of the activity we're doing, they did a jurisdictional ruling on this, a non-jurisdictional ruling back in June, since all of our activity is outside of the regulated areas. And I'll turn it back over to you, and if there's any questions, I'll let you answer them.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question on this application, now is your opportunity to stand up, state your name and your comment or your question.
Kevin Cunningham, 405 Musa Pond Road. Quick question on your second request for waiver. If a family member was then sell the property afterwards, do we, we've already been now given the waiver, so therefore there won't be any open space?
Because the waiver is on the cut, not the transfer, is that how you do it?
Right, if it were a transfer within 10 years' time, then they would open the space.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
So there's a limited window. They're going to sell it to somebody else, not you.
Right, it's 10 years.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Comments or questions from board members? Any other items from staff?
No, this is a pretty simple application, it's all ready to change.
Okay, so hearing and seeing no other comment, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June to close the public hearing. And a second by John, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B, 24-6 SPL of Plainfield Garage and Storage. So it's my understanding that we need some more information for this application, so we will be opening and continuing. So I will entertain a motion.
Do you want any presentation on it?
Does the board want a presentation tonight, or do you want all the items addressed before the presentation? It's up to the board.
There are new plans for this, I did not have a time to review, it's been up Wednesday, I believe.
Yeah.
The town engineer has not had a time to review either, but they can have a presentation quickly.
So I'll leave it up to the board. Does the board want to see the presentation?
I'd rather wait.
Wait, and so we have all the revisions included in the plans?
Yes.
Comments? Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'll make that motion to continue.
Motion to continue by June?
I'll second it.
Second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Public hearing is continued. Item C, 24-12 S Facility at Zero Park Ave, Assessor map 4P, block 18C, lot 29A, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have speaking for the applicant?
I have additional full-size sets if anyone needs them.
We have them. There are no modifications, right? We have the most?
We've sold them.
Yep.
Speaking is Justin Parlopiano, on behalf of the Kentucky Water Company.
Thank you.
With me is Joe Perugini and Kevin from Western Sampson, they are the design consulting firm. This is a continuation from public hearing on July, in which both Joe and Kevin presented the project. And then the goal for tonight is to demonstrate that we have made an effort to address the commission's questions and comments, as well as the town engineer's comments. And I will allow Joe to run through the summary of the changes since the previous year.
And what page are you on?
This is drawing C300.
I just want to confirm, we have August 6th, is the most missing set?
So we'll trade?
Yes.
Are you all right?
Three sets here.
I have one by 17th of that print. I may just sit down.
Yeah, that's fine, absolutely.
I know it's hard to try to go on the seat. Again, for the record, my name is Joe Perugini with Western Sampson, one of the engineers. I'll just summarize from the last meeting what has transpired. We had a few revisions and additional submissions to address commission comments. The plan revisions are primarily on this sheet that the board has shown here, this is C300. At the last meeting, there was a question about why we left the gravel driveway and didn't pave the rest of it, so the decision was made to extend the pavement, so that is entirely being repaved. We also did some minor stormwater changes. Because of the additional pavement, we enlarged the stormwater basin bottom, we flattened it out. That also, we took that extra impervious area into consideration, but there's also a comment from the towns engineer, which we flattened the bottom to address that comment as well. So the overall perimeter of the basin didn't change, just the bottom was flattened out just a little bit. Previously, we had stone trenches catching the pavement runoff and then piped into the basin. We've eliminated those, I don't want stone trench drains with perforated pipe. We're now running that water overland, just to promote overland sheet flow. But also, we recognize that that runoff has to be treated, so we've added around the rim of the basin what's referred to as a sediment treatment for bay. So that is capturing sediment, so that it doesn't clog the basin, so that it functions for an extended period of time. I don't think we have any other site plan changes. We did have the towns engineer review this, we received an email today and a letter that we've addressed the engineer's comments. Also, another commission comment was regarding, in the event of an emergency, how is a local emergency personnel being contacted? We submitted a copy of Connecticut Water's spill control and containment plan, and in that, it lists the contact people and the various local department staff to be contacted. That was in the July resubmission. I think that's all the changes that I have to date, and we'd be happy to open it up to questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question on this application, now is your opportunity to state your name and what your comment or question is. Thanks, Enam. Any comments or questions from board members?
I believe at the last meeting, we discussed some boring logs and test pits and infiltration, which I believe you did for a test?
That's right, thank you for reminding me. We did submit as part of the resubmission in July, a copy of the boring logs and also the test pits that were done. The boring logs, the borings were done by the building, and those symbols are here, and the test pits, four of those, were done in the area of the basin, and that's what the other symbols indicate. And so that was part of the design, how the basin was sized, and that was reviewed by the fifth towns engineer, who was in agreement with the overall design approach and what we assumed for infiltration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff?
No.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item D, 24-6 TA of Bee Paul Kaplan Esquire, requesting text amendment to section 13 sign regulations to allow for construction of new billboards along Interstate 395 by special permit. Do we have presenting for the applicant?
Yeah, hi, my name is Paul Sweet, 260 U Road, Musa, Connecticut. I'd like to pass over one down the page document. The members? Good evening, board, I'm here tonight representing Paul Kaplan, representing American Industries with a text amendment modification to 13.6.6, which would state billboards may be allowed by special permit on properties that are above Interstate 395 solely to advertise to motorists traveling on Interstate 395 according to the following standard. I'll read it on the record, you want that, okay?
Sure, please.
Number one, billboards may only be allowed within the C1, C2, and W1 zoning districts. Billboards are prohibited within the highway commercial district. Two, minimum property size shall be 8 acres. The entire property must be zoned as C1, C2, or W1, and the property must have at least 300 million feet bordering the southbound side of Interstate 395 right away, excluding entrance and exit ramps and rest station. Number three, the property must be located within 2,000 million feet of the intersection of the highway exit ramp and a state or town road measuring along 395 travelway. No more than two billboards are to be located between exits, or between an exit and a town line. No more than three billboards shall be permitted along Interstate 395 within the town. Number four, no billboard shall be located closer than 300 feet to a residential dwelling at the time the special permission application is submitted. Five, billboard regulated by section 13 56.6 should not be located closer than two miles 10,560 feet from one another, as measured along Interstate 395 travelway. The faces of the billboard must not exceed 14 feet or 48 feet. Number seven, no more than two faces are to be displayed and must be directed exclusively to Interstate 395. The faces may be flush back-to-back or in a V formation located on a single structure. Eight, the overall height of the structure shall not exceed 50 feet above highway grade and shall not be closer than 20 feet to an adjacent property excluding Interstate 395 right away. Nine, digital electronic billboards are permitted provided that they meet the following requirements. Brightness, during daylight hours between sunrise and sunset, luminance shall be no greater than 7,500 nits. At all other times, luminance shall be no greater than 300 nits. One nit is equal to one candle a square meter. All electronic advertising signs shall be equipped with automatic dimming control or other mechanism that automatically controls the sign brightness provided above, and must be maintained in proper working order. The text, image, or display on the electronic advertising sign may not change more than once every eight seconds, and must remain stationary for the duration of the advertising. Last time I came here, and we did not open a public hearing, because quite frankly, the documents that were given to me, if I presented it then, I'd be presenting something altogether different tonight, and I wouldn't, I knew that, and I simply didn't. You did us a favor, if I kind of advised you, now I'll do not open the public hearing. So tonight, we have a public hearing. Since that time, I told you when I left last time, that I would work with town staff, town administration, lawyers, and engineers to come up with something that we believe that's reasonable and restrictive, quite frankly. Now, I spent one early morning out at the one at Killenley. I watched that sunrise come up, I watched how it worked, and I also spent the evening up there to see how it dims itself. It's pretty spectacular in a sense that it's kind of like watching television, okay? And I found it kind of entertaining, because it didn't fear me personally to be intrusive in any way. But be it as it may, we worked on something that would be restrictive, and what we mean by that is, I went to Killenley Town Hall, I went to Water Town Hall, I wanted to see what they had for regulations and how they actually did it. Killenley, quite frankly, for every sign, if you saw their regulation, they have at least three pages, they regulate everything from a yard sale to a kid selling lemonade on the side of the street, it really, a lot of regulations, which is fine. But when it came to digital billboards, it was the town manager, the head of the Economic Development Commission, and some other person, which I found interesting, I personally don't have a problem coming before the land use authorities in the towns, you know, I found that interesting, but then I found some history on it, I understood. What still stood out was the idea, no more than three billboards were permitted in the town of Killenley. I said, well, I don't know what the reason behind that was, but sitting with Ryan, talking to Ryan, talking to Kaplan, talking to American, the distance, okay, the distance from Killenley town line to Grizzle town line is distant. And I'm a person that lives in Plainfield also, and I don't want to be driving down the road and seeing it look like the Las Vegas Strip or something like that, you know, where there's just so many billboard that people don't have time to read it. Another thing I need to point out, to be transparent in all those things, obviously, the town, and I don't represent the town, but I am supporting the town, the town is before different meetings, like town meetings, maybe meetings here, I don't know all the history, but quite frankly, without regulations, it's hard for you guys to live in this city. We recognize that. And I want to tell you, we were recognizing it as soon as the town was going to replace, we're looking to replace the billboard that we put in back when we built the industrial product up at the highway garage, which was a wooded structure, they were looking to make a more modern facility, and of course, there was revenue, tax revenue, or user revenue, whatever you want to call it, there was significant revenue coming to the town if they've got a digital billboard approved. So I want you to know that these regulations were also working for the town, that doesn't give me, I'm not asking for any favor, what I'm saying to you is, we're making a regulation that was needed in order for the town on its own special permission application to come before your board and seek city permission, no different than if American would come before your board, we'd have to have an application, pay fee, and come before your board and see if we could get approved. So I just want you to know, there's been a lot of activity between planning, lawyers, American, myself, doing a lot of work to come up with something that would be not so wide open, and I didn't show you what I had last time, wait a minute, what wide open now is restricted. So that's all I'll say, and I'll try and answer any questions that you have, if I can't get them all right, and then we'll come back again.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, if you have a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. So any comments or questions from the public?
All right, Gagne, I have one question, you mentioned the southbound side, that would be the west side of 395, I would assume? And the other question is, why just the southbound?
I'm going to be honest with you, we put it on the south side, and you, that's what they said, that's what they wanted, because there's two things that are in place, and one piece of property that I'm representing is on the west side. So you could say either side, okay? It's just, I know one in particular, it's the town property that's on the west side. A piece of property that we have is on the west side. I talked to Ryan late last Thursday, and this is what we all came up with, if the commission felt, and I think it had something to do also with how big of a hostel you had to have, because let's face it, you could use on a half acre, an acre, let's say. So we came to a thing of eight acres, okay? And the town has that, and we have that. Plenty of room, so, and again, that's the only thing I can tell you, it just was put there. Somebody wanted to slip in north side too, but to them, okay, but it's only going to be, well, if it's proved.
So it was with particular sites in mind, and those were on the southbound?
Southside, yeah, yeah, we'll make sure you remember. That's the only reason I can see why that would be.
I'd also like to point out that I had in your packet suggested changes, and the applicant has modified their submission, but I'll be receiving tonight to include those certain changes.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments or questions from the public on this application? Any comments or questions for board members?
I'm just curious, if somebody owns these and then buys space on the billboard?
I don't know, fair question.
Yeah, just curious.
My understanding is that they rent the property, and they're paying first rent fee. I don't know if they buy property, I don't know that, so I'm not, I learned a lot about billboards, but I don't know, I don't know how to finance package it, but I think it has something to do with a rental, a rental situation. Now whether the digital billboard owner's own property somewhere in the state or other places in America, I don't know.
Yeah, it likely would vary, it could likely vary based on property owner versus...
Yeah.
If you wanted to advertise, they all run different packages and...
Right, in the language it talks about, it has to show for eight seconds. My work that I did on it showed sometimes to have a time that goes from eight to 15 seconds, it could be eight, it could be 15, but it's all in the same sequence, it's not eight now, 11 over here, and then, you know, back to eight, it's all consistent. So we're saying eight seconds, which is in the norm of...
I've seen some, I've seen some of these, and then people are worried, oh, you know, it's going to be too much of a distraction, do they time that to know? I mean, I think the worst distraction is the cell phone, as far as driving, so...
Yeah, yeah.
To me, I...
I can't agree with that. The only thing I can tell the board is, do yourself a favor, I'm not here to push anything, I want to get approval, obviously, but if I don't, great, go right up there and look at the one in Killenley, and I've been by that thing all different hours, because I had to go to the hospital on business, and...
I've seen them.
It's just kind of interesting, and they don't, it's not gawky, they're not gawky like the old ones where you have floodlight or hundred light bulbs, wood hanging off on, you know, there's too much of an investment.
And peeling, peeling off, the paper peeling off from...
Right, right.
Okay. Now, just for clarification, we do not regulate the content of the advertising, that is not regulationable.
Correct, that's what I meant.
Then, when we did the cannabis regulations, we did an inventory of properties that would meet the regulations, have we done an inventory of properties regarding these regulations?
Initially, with the modifications that they proposed, there could be no more than three on the highway, so between the north property line, the south property line, the town.
Okay, because I'd like to see a map of which properties meet the regulation, so that board members can have a better idea of where these would be located in the event of unapproval of the text. Because I think one of the things that's really important for this board, just education for the public, is that when we put a text amendment into place, it's available for applicants, so if we don't have a clear understanding of where and how applicants could apply, it's better to know that ahead of time, so that later on, you're like, oh, I didn't know it could go there. So I think it's really important that we identify where these things could go, and then that would inform our ability to either further restrict or to understand what the current as written would allow. So I would like to see an inventory of properties like mapped out, I believe that's what we did for the cannabis regulations, I just think that would be helpful to make sure we understand. And also, just for context, so 50 feet high would be the maximum height, but just for comparison, what other signs or buildings are 50 feet high, so that people can have an understanding of how tall these would be?
So the John Deere dealership is approximately 12 feet tall, 50 foot is the max in industrial zone.
That's from roadway, right.
So the...
You're down on the hollow, obviously, you're in a...
Sure, so John Deere building on Route 12 in Plainfield is 50 feet tall building?
Approximately, yes.
All right, so for comparison. Thinking about 395 in general, besides the one in Killenley, how many other billboards of this nature are on 395? Do we have an idea of that?
I believe Killenley is the first, I'll travel down south a little.
There isn't any, there isn't any other in what we call a core of, some self.
Okay.
Killenley, we have, we agree with that, traveled a little.
Okay, and then...
Now, I also want to tell you, Matt Chairman, that the town, we're not competition with the town, which, well, I, we...
Regulation applies to everybody, so it's first, first, third, regulation.
Right, I would say, again, we don't have, American Industries is not in no deliberation We don't have, American history is not in no deliberation, or at this point, okay? If we're going to be, we'll come in here and disapprove with special permit. We have nothing like the town has, okay? The town has a lot, so I don't even know that. I mean, you could be in next month with some business building being built there or something. There won't be any housing like that, but it could be a business or something. But I don't even know that, okay? But the owner has followed this real close, and he is an interesting guy, you know? He just wants to be good, this shit on his own.
Then, you mentioned Killenley has regulations, and you did look at their regulations.
Yeah, I did. Ryan, did you look at that? I have a copy, I want to have him give the planning office a copy. I have to tell you, it's a little different, but I'll give you what I got.
Well, then, just once again, when we look at regulations, we want to make sure we're consistent with our neighbors as well. So when we looked at the cannabis regulations, we also looked at surrounding towns to see what they regulated. So I would like to see the Killenley regulations, and then if any other towns around us either prohibit or allow what those regulations look like, so that we can bring some consistency in proposed language. I think consistency is important. And then my last note I jotted down here was that it looked like the town had stopped billboards in 2007. But I was curious what the reason for that was. I, unfortunately, worked out over time, wasn't able to get to the clerk's office myself. So I would like, you know, if we have any information of why the board had put a stop to billboards in 2007 for some historical context, I think that would be important.
I actually wrote those regulations in 2007. Really what the town wanted to get away from was billboards within the town.
I remember you telling me that back in the days, and I just said, well, you must have a reason.
Let the village miss this week.
Well, you must have a reason, I can't do anything, I'm trying to figure it out.
It was simply because we had billboards starting Route 12 and other areas, and we decided to write the odd regulations. We weren't really thinking of 395 because there wasn't any already on there, except for the town's billboard.
Just remember now, we're not talking something that's hastily, I don't want to say we're hastily put together. We're talking something that's attractive, it costs money, it could be in any town. So, you know, it's not some cheap thing, but obviously, business, whatever business does, you know, they're not going to, they're not going to commit to something if they're not making a profit on it, you know what I'm saying?
And then, Ryan, just for procedure purposes, if the board wanted to go up to Killenley individually on their own to view that billboard at different times of day, am I correct that we need the public hearing open, and then the board member could report what they witnessed or saw at the continuation of public hearing?
Sure, if you're on a public highway, you're not going on a property, and if you'd like to receive additional information, like the regulations, we do have to keep public hearing open. Mr. Sweet has granted us a 35-day extension, we keep the hearing open.
Okay, very good. So with that, I would like to see the inventory of properties mapped out, so we can know where and when and how these regulations would apply. I do want to see the surrounding towns include in Killenley's regulations, so that we can ensure some consistency. And then if board members wanted to take it upon themselves to drive up to see the Killenley sign, this would offer opportunity to do so. So with all that, I would recommend continuing this public hearing.
Madam Chairman, just let me check out, like, the inventory of land, you're talking along 395.
Correct, the properties that would be eligible to apply under the regulations as written.
Okay.
If we wanted to, we could regulate two instead of three.
Correct, we can, we can adjust the quantity.
Or we see the properties are.
Correct, we can make adjustments to the language, because it technically becomes our language, so.
In 2007.
Yeah, go ahead.
A public hearing was scheduled, and it never, never, I never found it. It was never there, it never happened.
Oh, so you did go to the clerk's office to see?
Yeah, Diane and I looked, and we never, we never found it. It was supposed, it was the same thing.
Right.
It was too restricted for them, and they wanted to change it. And you were there, or Ryan was there.
I don't know, I didn't hear.
You were, you were at the meeting.
Okay, all right.
And it never happened, I don't know why. So here we are.
Right, right. Okay, Art?
Yes, I just wanted to say, in Norwich, they have electronic sign, billboard on the viaduct near Laurel Hill. So if you want to check Norwich's regulations too, look at that one.
Thank you, and I think I saw hands in the back.
Along the same lines, Madam Chairman, would it be something you would be looking for from CCM to see what other towns, municipalities along 395, and also 95?
That'd be great.
So we can ask for that?
Yeah, absolutely, more information.
While we're at it, because there are questions specific to the billboard, did you want us to have a discussion with the company that would be able to answer any questions?
We'll leave it up to the board, because we can't regulate the content. But if you had questions about image changing or the dimmer, so it's up to you.
The thing is, they require, we're not a market that affects.
Correct, correct.
But if you had questions, and you wanted to ask the company to give answers prior.
You offer another witness, like, or something?
Correct, to come in and tell you about billboards, right, the company itself.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So June's in favor, okay, that's fine, absolutely.
I just want to build with information.
Okay, so they're welcome to come.
Okay.
So before we continue this, we would like to see what certain property this could apply to, and also the rights of Killenley, is there anything else?
Norbitribs, and then if we could do just kind of an inventory of surrounding towns to see who prohibits, who allows, and then if anyone else allows, what their regulations are for comparison. I think that's important.
Yeah, that would have to be 54, that seems kind of obnoxious. I mean, so, you know, if other towns say they have to, or across the whole state, like, they said 25 feet, wherever the number may be.
Right, just.
I wouldn't want Plainfield to have this 50-foot option.
Yeah, sticking out.
And sort of what in Norwich is quite big.
Okay, all right, well. And for the inventory of properties, if we could have them mapped out, like we did for the cannabis, if it gets just a digital aid, that's helpful.
I did that initially.
Your house, so that'll be okay.
I'll do it for sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, yeah, John?
Since this 395 corridor is the last green valley, I believe, is, has been made by the Park Service to some degree. Do I have a. We want to get.
Hold on one moment, he's still speaking.
See if they have any input into that.
So the state controls the highway, so anything that advertises the highway, the state has full control over it. So they would cover that.
So do they have any kind of current regulations that?
I don't know, DOT, I don't know what DOT requires.
Could we reach out to state DOT and find out? Because obviously, we don't want to approve language that runs counter to any language that they might already have.
So the applicants, are they here tonight?
No.
Okay, because they probably have that, because, didn't they do the Killenley one as well?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so they would be able to answer that.
So we definitely, I would like to get it from state DOT, so I'm assuming.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, I'll give you.
I'm assuming when someone goes to apply to state DOT, they must be given guidelines or framework. So that's what I would like to see.
Some of these regulations are, there is state regulation. There are, there goes special permit in one thing, but then there's another series of regulations. Okay, I want you to know that. But I don't, that's all I'm telling you, there's another set of regulations, and some of this wouldn't come, we'd take care of that. But they have, they have some more specific thing, like, a difference in, it's going to be 100 feet away from where you are. Okay, well, we're, it's fine, but it's, I want you to know, this is beginning, it's not going to happen. We still got state process too.
Okay. All right, so for members, we're going to get that inventory of properties mapped out, so we can see. We're going to check the Killenley regs, the Norwich regs, the surrounding towns, for whether they prohibit or allow, and if they allow, make copy of those regulations. And then to check the state DOT, and then, first electman was going to check with the CCM state.
Can I ask a question again? You mentioned Norwich, Norwich regs, I'll be talking on 395?
If they have it limited out, but otherwise, I think whatever billboard they have that is similar to what the billboard here would be, then whatever, whatever regulations apply to billboard, I think is important to include. Yeah.
Okay, City of Norwich is a big place, if you want to, 395, then I, okay. But I mean, you've got to be over in Ox Hill or somewhere, going through that way.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
We'll make that motion.
Motion by June to continue, a second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is continued, and that's our regularly scheduled meeting in September. Item B, 24-1, ZC of Lynn Lalliburgh, requesting a zone change for eight, Academy Hill Road, from RA 60 to commercial, assessors map 1P, block 56, lot 43. And do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
Yes, Sam. Hello. So I'm Lynn Lalliburgh, number 11, Orange Road. I currently own a business operating on 509, Orange Road, and I kind of just want to move it across the street because we have expanded.
So just for clarity, this is a zone change. There's no application currently for a business. If it's all changed and explained, then the application for the business department, which will require a second hand, then the applicant is away from that. So I have one in your packet, inherent photo, location of the property. This is just behind former Wandermat, which is on the intersection of Route 12 and Academy Hill. And the next page is a zoning map showing commercial surrounding it with RA 80, do something else.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody with a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. Any comments or questions from board members?
I have a question, what other question?
Oh, if you could stand up, state your name and what your question is.
So my name's Melissa Chimbressa, and I'm a neighbor, so I was just wondering about that property. So I was just wondering what the business was.
Sure, the current business is a massage therapy business. But as Ryan said, tonight's application is for a zone change, so any use allowed in a commercial zone could be allowed on this property once it is re-zoned commercial. You're welcome. Any other questions from audience members? Any other questions from board members? Question for you, Ryan, just for clarity, because it's a pretty small lot, am I correct about that?
It's 0.45, I think, for work.
So we're less than half an acre?
Yes, just.
Okay, so when we're looking at the uses that are permitted in commercial districts, there are some that would be essentially prohibited because of the lot size, right?
No, as long as it meets the commercial requirements, the lot size would be okay.
But the size and scope of it would be limited?
Yes, so how much parking you can get there is bound on the size of the lot. This is a decent-sized commercial lot. If you look for Paris and the old Wandermat, how much they have, and I believe, well, that lot's .17. So they share that plenty of parking.
And the reason I ask that question is because, once again, this application is a zone change. So we can't just think about what the applicant's proposal might be, but any future proposals should the intention not come to fruition. So just thinking kind of broader about the other things that could be allowed because of the lot size, and you need to have enough parking for function, so that would be kind of a self-limiting aspect of the property. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Any other comments or questions on this application?
On Madam Chairman?
Yes.
As you mentioned, Paul, she'll be 260, just want to make the board aware, there's sewer water there, so that enhances things a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this application? Yes?
I'd just like to say, I'm just a commercial around there anyway.
Okay, and what was your name again for the reference?
I'm Melissa Chimbressa.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions, board members? All right, hearing is seen none, I'll entertain a motion of closed public hearing. Motion by John, closed public hearing. A second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting, I'll call the meeting to order. We have additions and corrections to the agenda. We need to add three items under new business, item B, C, and D. Do I have a motion to add those to the agenda?
I'll make the motion to add those.
Motion by June. Second by John, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Added under new business, item B, C, and D. Citizen participation, this is opportunity for the public to address the board on an item that was not part of the public hearing process. So if you have a comment or a question for the board, this is your opportunity. Okay, hearing is seen none. Moving on to the unfinished old business. Item A, 24-1SA of Albert and Susan Monte, applying for two-lot re-subdivision of 257 Musa Pond Road, assessors map 22 block 88, lot 20, RA 60 zoning district. So before we can vote on the application, there were two requests for waivers. The first was a request for a waiver of the property history map. Any items for discussion on that request? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the request for waiver.
We'll make a motion to accept it.
Very qualified, Dan. Grant the waiver.
Approved.
To grant, John.
All right, we have a motion to approve the waiver. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
I have a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the property history map waiver is approved. The second request was to waive the open space fee, and this is under a special exception regarding family, which Ryan mentioned, there's a 10-year period. If they transferred it to somewhere else, then the open space would become effective.
If you would like to put condition that should the property transfer within 10 years to someone other than the family member, then you'd apply, say, $2,000 open space fee upon transfer.
I like that modification. Board members have any other items for discussion on the request and staff's proposed condition?
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver with the $2,000 fee if, within 10 years of someone, if someone else signs family.
Okay, a motion by June with that condition?
No.
Second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Waiver is approved with that condition. So now the vote on the application itself, any other points of discussion on the application? Okay, hearing is seen none, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by June. I have a second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the application is approved. Okay, thank you. Moving on. Item B, 24-6SPL was continued, so I need a motion to continue this as well?
Make the motion to continue.
Motion to continue by June. Second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is continued. Moving on to item C, 24-12SP, any items for discussion?
Do you have adjusted conditions and approval?
I will go ahead and read those. So there are three items, conditions of approval from staff. An approval block for planning and zoning commission chair signatures to be added to the cover page. Lighting fixtures must direct the light directly downward, as shown on the plans. And item three, MARS are to be filed in the clerk's office along with special permit approval prior to receiving a zoning permit. Any other items of discussion? Okay, hearing is seen none, I'll entertain a motion on the application, and if you want to include the conditions, just include as read.
I'll make that motion, include it, include it as read.
All right, June made a motion to approve with the conditions as read. Do I have a second? I have a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is approved with those conditions. All right, item D was continued, so I'll entertain a motion to continue that item as well. I have a motion by John to continue. I have a second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Item D is continued. Moving on to item E, 24-2SA of Custom Built Homes by Fred Lado, proposing a nine-lot subdivision with an 800-foot cul-de-sac on property located at Zero Spalding Road, assessors map 26, block 10, lot 12, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have a speaker for the applicant?
Yeah, we're still in the process of working drainage out with the town engineer, so we're just going to ask their F E continues next month.
Very good.
I know Norman had conversations with them.
All right, so hearing that, I'll entertain a motion. All right, so hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Motion to continue by June and a second by John, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Application is continued. Item F, 24-1, ZC of Lynn Lalliberg requesting a zone change for 8th Academy Hill Road from RA 60 to commercial, assessors map 1P, block 56, lot 43. Any items for discussion?
It's in an area that has considerable commercial surrounding it, it's on the main road. Has adequate area for a reasonable business to be in there, water and so on. I'd make a motion to approve.
And would that have an effective date?
Yes, September 1st, 2020.
Okay. I have a motion to approve with an effective date of September 1st. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by John and a second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The application is approved with an effective date of September 1st. Yes.
Just to, for the record, this is, applies to the Constitution.
Okay, thank you. All right, so application is approved with an effective date of September 1st. All right, moving on to item G, 24-7SPL of Pamela Jones requesting site plan approval for expansion of employee parking at 131 Norwich Road, assessors map 15, block 75, lot 4, C2 zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
I do not believe so, and we're still working on the site plans.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to continue that application.
I'll make that motion to continue.
Motion to continue by June.
I'll second.
Second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Application is continued. Moving on to new business. Item A, 24-13SP of Krista Field requesting a special permit. Special permit requires a public hearing. So I would entertain a motion to schedule the public hearing to our next meeting, which I believe is September 10.
I'll make a motion to schedule this for a public hearing.
All right, I have a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I'll second it.
And a second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, very good. Moving on to item B. 24-8SPL of Vigant LLC requesting permission to construct a gas station convenience store with drive-through and onsite car wash at property located at 340, 342 Prospect Street, assessors map 22, block 88, lot 5, C2 zoning district. Is this a public hearing, Ryan?
Aye, no, it's not.
Okay, but it does need inland weapons.
Yes, but I believe it would be able to like to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just give you a quick rundown. So this is an application that was before you before, it's the former Ra-Ra's site. It's kind of a little shrunken down now what we're doing with it. It's not a little bit smaller footprint, but we're in front of weapons right now. We're at DOT review and it's at, I think it's consent office of the town's engineer for review. So we understand we have to go through those things first before we have any more input to it.
All right, very good, thank you. So given all that, I'll entertain a motion to continue this application.
I'll make that motion to continue.
A motion by June to continue.
I'll second it.
Second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Application is continued. Item C, 24-6SA of Plainfield Industrial Holdings LLC proposing a two-lot re-subdivision of 76 Community Ave, assessors map 2P, block 30A, lot 3, Industrial One zoning district. Do we have someone for the applicant?
I don't believe so, this does require a public hearing. They're also way around the zone, what appeals interference and inland weapons.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion. And actually, will all of that be ready for September 10th, or should we schedule it for October?
It all lines up.
It all lines up, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for September 10th.
I'll make that motion to schedule September 10th.
Motion by June. Second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing scheduled for September. Item D, 24-10TA of Killenley Engineering Associates requesting a text amendment to Section 7.25 zoning regulations pertaining to interior lot sizes and interior lot access. As a text amendment, it does require a public hearing. So I would make a motion to schedule that public hearing.
I'll make a motion to schedule that public hearing.
I have a motion by June. I have a second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing for September. We don't have a copy of that text yet.
We do have a second in our package.
In the new packet, okay, very good, thank you. All right, moving on to reviewing and acting on the minutes from the July 9th meeting. Does anyone have any modifications or changes to the minutes?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
Nor did I. All right, so hearing is seen none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by June and a second by John, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Abstaining, so we have Dan abstaining from the, thank you. Moving on to correspondence.
You have one open on correspondence, which is the planning and zoning commission updates for court cases, and I will.
All right, very good. A report from zoning enforcement?
Katie is up here, going to have a report.
So just what was previously submitted, okay. A report from planning?
The only update that I have is the Shepherd Hills sidewalks are nearing completion and the next couple of weeks they'll be completed.
Okay, excellent. Moving on to other, we have the discussion of the gravel operations. So in the packet, staff has included some of the texts to be added and deleted based on our previous conversations. So I would recommend that everyone read through this and make sure it's reading as you had intended. And then at our next meeting, if you have modifications or changes, to bring those modifications or changes to the next meeting. And then once we determine the texts that we want to move forward with, we would file the application and then it would have to go through the public hearing process.
Yes, this is just the ideas that you brought before me and checked out, see if you like what I have.
Okay, very good. And then item B was the discussion regarding modifications to the EV charges.
So we have been receiving several requests for EV chargers, which has to go through planning and zoning site plan approval. We also required regulations that each EV charger were to have two parking spaces, one for the charger itself and one for stacking. When we came up with regulations, we weren't sure what's going to happen. Now in California, they, the electric vehicles really took off. They're having very long lines, traffic backups, people waiting to charge. So we were conservative in the regulations requiring that one stacking space per charger. We haven't been able to get any applications that conform to the regulations because they didn't have parking spaces. So since we haven't been seeing the problems like California did, we might want to back off on that one stacking space. And we would require, let's say that a gas station required five parking spaces for the convenience store. They would have to add a sixth and seventh parking space with EV chargers, where I think we could probably just knock it down to the EV charger has to be in one parking space, maybe limit it to one or two chargers. For, say, five overall parking spaces, we come up with something. But it's a little too restrictive.
So you'd have draft language for us to review next, next month?
Okay.
If, if the commission agrees that that might be a good change to draft up, we can have them draft it for our next meeting to review.